The next panel to be seated is the, are the five candidates for the open seats on the Morgan Hill City Council. Candidates will have four rounds. The first round is a one-minute introduction. The order of speaking, as well as the order of seating, has been determined at random. The second round will consist of each candidate placing a 30-second question to one of his opponents. I use "his" generically. The opponent has one minute to respond. The questioner has a 30-second follow-up and the opponent has one minute to respond. The fourth round are questions from the floor. We limit your question to 30 seconds in order that we keep a focus on the panel rather than a focus on the audience. Choose your question carefully. You may ask more than one question, but we seek to get everybody an opportunity to speak. Then we will stop the floor questions in time for the candidates each to have a two-minute summary, again, speaking in random according to the draw. I'll ask the candidates for the Morgan Hill City Council to take their seats on the platform, In the first round, Kelly Cubaca, I have sought to contact her repeatedly with no response. I have left message after message on her voicemail and no response. Alan Abrams is the next person chosen. Julia Starling is next.
Good evening. My name is Julia Starling and thank you for this opportunity. I am very proud and very privileged to be here tonight. I am a retired former, I've always been in the service as far as public relations. I am a public servant. I retired from the Department of Social Services in 1995 and I worked for the Welfare Department. And I'm a native Californian. I've lived in Santa Clara County all my life and I've lived in Morgan Hill for going on 11 years. And that's just a little bit of history. I'm a grandmother. I raised five children as a single parent and they're all very solid citizens. One's a schoolteacher. She's been teaching for 23 years and she teaches for the Melpitas Unified School District. My other daughter works in Superior Court. She works for Judge Greeley. She's her deputy reporter. And my other daughter is up paralegal and my son works in Morgan Hill.
The lights rule. The next speaker is Mark Gresson.
Hi. My name is Mark Gresson. I'm a native Californian and native to this valley. I've lived here all my life. I moved to Morgan Hill 10 years ago from Sunnyvale. Moved from the Valley of Technology to the Valley of Heart's Delight. This is a wonderful place to live and I really enjoy it. Reminds me of my childhood. We're surrounded by orchards and family farms. Morgan Hill represents one of the few remaining true small-town communities that I truly enjoy. I'm running for office for the first time. It's the right decision for me. I have 22 years of public finance experience. I graduated from Bellarmine here. Graduated from Cal State Hayward. I also have a master's degree in public administration from San Jose State. I teach in evenings right here in Gatherland College and I enjoy doing that. I served on the General Plan Task Force, the Urban Limit Line Advisory Committee. I fought to keep our hospital, to restore health care, to make our community center more of a community center. And I really enjoy serving Morgan Hill residents. And this is the right thing to do and I intend to do the right thing as the next council member for Morgan Hill.
Mr. Carr.
Well, thank you. First of all, thank you, Mr. Gilmore, for putting this together. Church of the Valley for hosting us and those of you who've come out to listen to us tonight. It's a great opportunity to talk to voters and I appreciate you spending the time with us. My name is Larry Carr and I'm running for reelection to the city council in Morgan Hill. I have served one year for the past four years on the council where I think we've done some really incredible things in what are some challenging times in Morgan Hill. We have kept the promise of the people on our public works projects and our public facilities that we have built in Morgan Hill. And we have done that in what I say are challenging times. We are faced with difficult budget times that take experienced leadership in order to work through those. The council has put together a plan to keep our budget in balance, to be able to provide the necessary services that I believe a full-service city ought to be offering to its residents, to the people of Morgan Hill and the surrounding areas. And I want to work hard to continue in that plan, to continue serving the people and making sure that those city services are delivered in an affordable and efficient way. And I'm looking forward to answering your questions tonight. Thank you very much for inviting me.
I'm going to take a moment to suggest that the best microphone recording is when your lips are within an inch, inch and a half of the microphone. So adjust the microphones and make them submit to you rather than you have to bend over and be uncomfortable submitting to them.
Thank you.
Secondly, we have on the second round an opportunity to place a question to one of your opponents. Of course, that round is hampered at some point because two of the opponents are not available to answer. If you wish to place a rhetorical question and a follow-up question, 30 seconds each, you're welcome to do that to an opponent that thought, "It's not here." At any rate, the first person to place a question to an opponent is Larry Carr.
Thank you. Sometimes this is a little awkward. As candidates, we like to talk about ourselves and talk about our accomplishments and not necessarily any of the other candidates. But that's the rules. So the question I'm going to propose, and I guess I could ask it of anyone here, including the candidates who are not here, but being that we do have two candidates here, Mark, if you don't mind, tell us how you are preparing yourself to potentially be a council member. We know at least one seat is open, potential of two seats being available. So how are you preparing yourself on the issues before Morgan Hill?
Larry, thank you. The way I've been preparing myself is that I read a lot. We can go on the Internet today and we can look up council minutes and see what's going on. I'm on various committees within, in this community. Currently on the Urban Limit Advisory Committee. I'm passed on the General Plan Task Force. I talk to residents. I get around. I write letters to the Morgan Hill Times on opinions that I have regarding the direction the city is going. I've sat down with our mayor. I've sat down with individual council members. I've spoken with Parks and Recreation Commissioners, members of our Bicycle Advisory Council. In fact, I've taken some of our members from our Bicycle Advisory Council in my van and truck and took them around town and told them where we can build creeks and streams and integrate them into parks within our own community. I've been quite active, Larry.
Follow-on question?
I'm sorry? Actually, I don't have one, Mr. Gilmore.
Follow-on question is passed. The next person is Mark.
We have, my question is for Larry, but it's a kind one. Today we hear that--
You're not going to win votes with kind questions.
We have, well, we have a unique city and I think we try to work collaboratively with each other and we do have an active community. I just want to mention, I just took a job with the City of Newark and I attended one of their council meetings and the only people in the council chambers were staff. So there was nobody from the community there. But you won't find that in our community because half it's being taken up by, okay, the question. "Today we hear that we, kitchen toxins increase the risk of breast cancer and our water is high in nitrates and now includes perchlorate. Should our residents be concerned?"
I guess I would answer, and I would say, all too frequently our council chambers are full of just staff and that we don't have residents or candidates there at our meetings. I'm not sure that our residents are well-informed about the perchlorate problem that we are faced with. I don't think that they should be concerned because this council has acted very prudently and in fact, above and beyond what state health regulations are for protection of our water. Whenever any of our wells have had a first reading for a detection of perchlorate, you're required to do a second reading to confirm that. And then it is the average of those two readings that the state recognizes that the reading. We've never had that average reading except for the tenant well. We've never had that average reading above an action level by the state of California. However, if we've ever had just one hit, we've taken that well offline. So the water that is in our municipal system that people are using is below the action level by the state of California standards. So I don't think that they should be alarmed because we're taking very conservative, prudent steps to protect that water.
I'll ask the panelists to pay attention to the red light, please, and a follow-on question.
Follow-up question. Our wells test as non-detected. Do you think our residents understand what that means?
Well, I'm not sure because it is a very scientific term. We have done a significant amount of work to let people know what that is. We've worked with the Water District to let people know about that. And at every one of our meetings, we actually have an update on it. So I'm not sure if they do know what that means, but it's certainly not for lack of trying. And like I say, we have taken any of those wells offline. We have, in fact, two perchlorate treatment plants on wells today to try to remove perchlorate out of the system and out of the groundwater, to try to make that water even safer and still be able to provide necessary water for fire protection and other services in Morgan Hill. So the water that we're providing is more than prudently safe. We have taken above and beyond precautions to make sure that that water is safe for our residents.
Ms. Starling.
Same question.
You may place a question to one of the opponents.
Oh, I see. Okay. Well, I was going to ask Mark. Why did you decide to run this time when you are into so many other things and you're so good at them?
Thank you, Julia. Appreciate that. Why did I take the opportunity? Part of it was a sense of duty, almost. There was a vacancy opened and I actually looked to see if other candidates were going to apply. Certainly other people that I would like to see serve on this board, but I didn't see them come forward. And I felt a sense of duty to come forward and offer myself and my time to serve on this council. It is quite a commitment. People don't really realize the amount of time that one has to spend serving in this council. You give up your Wednesday nights, but you probably give up the other nights in the week as well and give up your weekend and times with family in order to be well-informed, to read the materials that come to you that are probably two inches thick. And it's quite a lot, but I think I can do it and I can think I can do it very well.
Follow-on question? Have you a follow-on question?
No, I don't.
The follow-on person passes. I just received a note that I need to apologize to the panel because they weren't properly briefed on the lights. The green light means that your timing is running. The yellow light means that you have 15 seconds before your mic goes dead. The red light means your mic is dead. We've had our second round of questions. Now we'll open the floor for questions from the floor. Anybody that has a question, please raise your question in a 30-second period. And the candidate that you place your question to has one minute to respond. You may ask more than one question, but we want to give everybody an opportunity to
My understanding is that Olin is responsible for the perchlorate problem. If that's true, why are the water rates increasing right now in Morgan Hill?
Who's it placed to?
Okay, Mark.
The water rates are increasing because of the costs, it costs us, Morgan Hill, to put in cleaning equipment to keep our water pure. The costs are actually $3 million over the next several years that's being passed on to us. Unfortunately, we're paying for something we didn't do and I'm kind of lost to why the reasons because I would hope that we would have a much more aggressive approach to this. There are things that are beyond our control, regulations and so on, but we ought to be bringing our legislators down here to help us. And there's some of that, but I think we'd even need more of that. So the rates are going up and unfortunate, we have to absorb most of those costs. I wish there were alternatives. And maybe that's a follow-up question for Mr. Carr.
You may ask your follow-up question.
Mr. Carr, do you have an opinion on that and why are we paying for what we didn't cause originally?
Sure. I have an opinion on it, but I'll give you an answer instead. There are actually two reasons why our water rates are increasing in Morgan Hill. One of them does have to do with perchlorate and the other has to do with the Santa Clara Valley Water District. Most of you know we get our water out of what's called the aquifer or out of groundwater. The city of Morgan Hill does not own that water. The rights to that are by the Santa Clara Valley Water District. So when we pump water out of that ground, they tax us. They tax the city of Morgan Hill. The Santa Clara Valley Water District is raising their pump taxes this year by 25% and next year again. We have to absorb those costs in some way. In order to keep our water system solvent, we need to be able to bring in more money to keep that water system alive. It's an enterprise fund, meaning that it operates on its own with the revenue that comes in to pay the expenditures. So we've had to increase costs because of that. We also have a separate increase in your bills that is related to perchlorate costs that are very specific to the cleanup today. We don't have the opportunity to order Olin to do anything. The Regional Water Quality Control Board does that and we're working with them to try to recoup those costs and ask them to clean that, to clean the aquifer up.
Another question from the audience. I'll exercise my authority as the moderator to place a question to the panel. I'll ask the panel to respond in 30-second answers, beginning on my far right and coming toward me. The first question I have, by what do you measure the choices that you'll be making if you are elected to the city council?
Is that to me, Ben?
No.
No, it's to me. I personally, by integrity. I will measure it by integrity. Moral, morals, by communicating with the people, one-on-one. I feel that in order for a council to run effectively, you need to be a team player, number one, but you also need to remember that you're out there to represent people. These people are taxpayers. They elected you to a position and you will be held accountable and you should be held accountable for any action that you take, but I measure it by integrity.
Thank you. I think there's a couple of things that I use when I'm considering issues, especially very complex, controversial issues. And I try to judge what we're looking at as whether those are fair issues, fair for all people involved, whether there is equity amongst how we're deciding things. Are we deciding things differently for different people? Am I being asked to make decisions for someone that would be entirely different depending on who it would affect? So we need to make sure that there's equity. And of course, consistency. I think that the public ought to be able to have some kind of predictability in the way that government works and consistency in the way that works. But I think one of the things that's really overarching in the decisions that we're going to be faced with over the next four years is sustainability. And the decisions that we make, are they sustainable decisions? Can we really afford to do the things that are being asked of us? And can we do them in such a way that we'll be able to continue them and carry them out? Or are we going to have to turn right around and reverse decisions again in a short time?
I'm a trained analyst. What that means is I can take problems, quantify them, qualify them. I served as a consultant for the California State Energy Commission. My job has been an analyst for the last 20-some years. My approach I have is different in try to put things into numbers if we possibly can, quantify even the ambiguous things, and then oftentimes move to a decision matrix with the numbers if we possibly can. It's one approach. Including in that approach, you have the opinions of the people, which can be weighted heavier or less than others, other things. But the components of a decision is all of those things. It's not one or the other and one doesn't displace any one of them. But you bring all of that together when you come to the final decision-making process. So what I bring to measurement, I'm going to bring measurement to the process. And we'll be able to look at things statistically, numerically, and then we'll bring in the passion of the people and how they feel and what we need to do and weigh that as well. And hopefully we'll come to consensus and make the right decisions for Morgan Hill.
I give my next question to the panel in the same order. If elected to the council, how do you propose to balance the pressures that you receive from your constituencies with the pressures you receive from the county and state organizations?
Would you mind repeating that?
If elected to the panel, to the board, to the Morgan Hill City Council, how do you propose to balance the pressures you receive from your constituency, from the voters that elected you, with the pressures you receive and the directives you receive from the county and the state?
Well, as I've said before, I'm not a politician and I, but I think I would balance them by keeping everything in perspective, prioritizing situations that come up with the council, talking to people. To me, the most important, to me personally, is talking individually to people because you get so much great input from the people that you represent. And so I think I would keep a really good balance by trusting in what I represent, what I believe to be doing right for the community, doing the right thing, in all, trying to just, to represent the people that elected me and doing the right thing by them.
Mr. Carr.
Well, thank you. First of all, we're elected by Morgan Hill voters, so my first priority is the city of Morgan Hill. The safety of the voters, the sustainability of our budget, to be able to provide services in the city of Morgan Hill. That being said, I think that we have very good partnerships with county officials. We have good partnerships with our local state officials. However, the state historically has used cities and local government, county and special districts, as their funding source to balance their budget. And that is a very difficult thing for us. We have no recourse in that. However, I'll make a plug for Prop 1A on your ballots on November 2nd. That will provide protection for local government, cities, counties, and special districts in that in two years, we will have constitutionally protected revenues where the state won't be able to grab those dollars and we won't have those significant pressures from the state any longer. We'll be able to have significant protected revenues that we'll be able to use for the betterment of our community and for our voters in Morgan Hill.
There are a lot of pressures coming from within our community and from the state and not always financial, many regulations that we have to comply with regarding health, roads, compliance issues and so on. How do you balance that? Part of it is looking at what the issues are. First thing you serve, for me, is the residents of Morgan Hill. That's the first priority. We're policymakers. Sometimes we don't agree on things and we don't always have to follow the rules. If the rules don't fit, we change policy. And so we pressure the legislature and we tell them this doesn't work or this doesn't fit. And we change the rules so that we can do what we need to do here in Morgan Hill. Sometimes they're just things that we have to comply with. And then it's incumbent upon me to explain to the residents here very clearly, not from behind council chambers, but in the community, of what decisions we made and why we couldn't do what they want to do. And so part of my job is to make sure that we communicate always with the community of what we're doing and letting them know what we have to do.
Mr. Gilmore, there may be another question or two.
I was going to pause and ask if these answers have generated questions again from
There was a recent scandal in the city council and there were two editorials in Tuesday's paper talking about how poor of a decision it was to pay off the attorney. So I am asking Larry Carr, number one, were you part of that decision and number two, will you renew her contract?
Thanks, Brooke. Yeah, we have over the past, gosh, more than six months and actually something that the council has been dealing with for a couple of years now. Been dealing with a very difficult issue that has dealt with one of my colleagues on the council and her treatment of staff. It's been a very troubling issue, but it's one that I have felt very strong about. As a city council member, I'm an employer and it's my responsibility to protect our employees when they are being harassed in the workplace, whether it be from another employee or from one of their employers. And I take that responsibility very seriously. We did enter into a legal settlement in threatened litigation about workplace harassment and that settlement as a legal matter doesn't allow me to comment about the settlement, but absolutely I was a part of the decision. I've been a part of every decision that has happened in the city of Morgan Hill for the past four years. I take that role very seriously and I'm very responsible about that as well, that it's important for me to be a part of every decision that happens.
Is there another question? Follow-up question?
It did cost the taxpayers a great deal of money. Mark, how would you have handled that?
It's a difficult question because I didn't, but things that come to my mind is that when the issue came up, I might have turned the whole thing over to the police and the district attorney and let them handle it. But that's a little hindsight here because I wasn't in closed doors behind council, didn't hear everything. But it sounds like that might have been prudent. And then that relieves me of the responsibility and sets it on the district attorney perhaps to investigate and follow up. And maybe I wouldn't incur the expense of the investigation, but maybe the county would if they wanted. If they found anything illegal or illicit was going on, it would be them. I would probably defer to them and let them take it and then judge what they come back with. But that would be perhaps my first thing that I would do as opposed to try to adjudicate the situation ourselves.
Thank you. Hi. Mr. Carr--
Closer to your lips, please.
I'll address this to you. Getting back to the comments about the relationship with the county, here in South County, we seem to be the first one to lose services whenever there are county budget constraints. County goes ahead and pulls up stakes. We have fewer mental health services, fewer other kinds of services for people with disabilities and of low incomes. Also nonprofits that are countywide pull up stakes. SO is gone, St. Joseph DePaul is gone. What are the kinds of things that you will be doing to help make sure that those of different incomes and those who have disabilities but whose home is here can stay here?
Great question. I have consistently, one of the things that we get to do that is both rewarding and a very difficult thing at the same time is rewarding funds through the Community Development Block Grant, federal dollars that go for certain services. It's rewarding because you get to actually hear from service providers that are doing great things and you get to help provide some funding to continue those things. Difficult because the requests are always far greater than the amount of dollars that we have. I have consistently over the past four years supported using additional dollars out of our redevelopment agency to supplement some of those dollars. And I have never looked at those where of course, the first and foremost priority is services for Morgan Hill residents, but we've never looked at those as if we have walls around our city. Those services very frequently are used in the county and in fact, we've even used some dollars in the homeless shelter that is here and as well in the homeless shelter that's being built in Gilroy and looking at that as more of a regional approach. As well, I serve on the South County Joint Planning Advisory Body where we talk a lot about those kinds of issues from a regional perspective.
I have a question. Mr. Gresson, a while back you spoke about how you would weigh certain factors when you make a decision and that you at some point would come back and see if, you know, the people would have a, and I kind of, I get a little bit concerned when I hear politicians speak that way because they are representative of the people and that should weigh much heavier than your personal opinions. Could you please re-explain what your guiding force is on this?
I hope I didn't mean it was my personal opinion. What I was trying to say is that we would prepare a good rationale of what the problem is. is, and present options to the, to the residents, to the council, to make, help us make the decision. But a lot of times, we make decisions without much information from us. We haven't really gone into the root of the problem and looked at it from a, from a quantified or quantifiable approach. And I would do that, and we would bring some, some choices, and we, all I'm saying is we should measure them and look at the indirect and direct costs, because there, you know, there are other, there are so many factors involved that we make sure that our residents know, all of, all of them, so we make the right choices.
I have another, another question to place to the panel. My apologies, this is a hypothetical question, and as such, you have the privilege of declining an answer. But it's also a real question. Some years ago, in the city of Gilroy, the largest public meeting in the history of Gilroy was stimulated by a conflict with the ACLU. You may recall that for many, many, many decades, the Gilroy School Board had opened its meetings regularly with a prayer. The ACLU challenged and said that was wrong. The school board members said, get out of our face, we're going to go ahead and do it anyway. The ACLU responded by raising the stakes and saying, if you persist, then we are threatening to come through the corporate shield into your personal savings. At the largest meeting in the history of Gilroy, as the public turned out to the school board, it was held in a big gymnasium, one by one, the members of the school board said, I have money to send my daughter to college, I can't risk it, and this, and that, and the other, and then that resulted is the school board bowed to the ACLU pressure. Hypothetically, had you been on the school board, how would you have handled that question?
Well, you know, when I went to school, God was always in there, somewhere. I pledge allegiance to the flag, God bless America. I wouldn't have taken that out. I personally wouldn't. I would have voted against it. That's just my belief.
We have, at the city of Morgan Hill, we have a moment before we do the Pledge of Allegiance every one of our meetings, where we have a moment of silent reflection. We ask the, the audience to join us in that and reflect personally upon whoever it is that they reflect upon. I find that is a very valuable time for me. It's an important time for me to ask for some guidance, ask for some help, settle some things down, close my eyes, and prepare for what is ahead of us that evening. Every one of our meetings are very important. Perhaps the law is different today, but I'm not sure that the corporate shield can be, can be, can be broken that easily. It's, it's very unfortunate if, if a volunteer, serving in a capacity as we all seek to, is threatened with a personal attack like that, especially if they are acting in their capacity as that council member or as that school board member. And I think that we have more protections today to be able to allow us to act more freely as, as an elected official.
Mr. Grisane.
It's oftentimes difficult to deal with when our values clash with laws and regulations. I've always been a person of conviction, and have stood by my values regardless of what the laws happen to be, but I'm also a law-abiding person. So it's, it's time, if the laws don't allow me to do what I need to do, it's time for me to change the laws, and hopefully I have consensus from my community to do that. But that's the democratic process we have here, and I would abide by that.
As a follow-up question to the panel, I would come back and point out that the pressure was very heavy on each candidate, or rather, each member of the board. May I assume that in each case, you would have told the ACLU you were not going to bow, or you were going to bow to their requirement?
I would definitely say I'm not going to bow. Absolutely. That is my belief, and I'll stand on that. I will not bow to something I do not believe in.
As elected officials, we're faced with tremendous pressure every day in every one of our meetings, whether it be from the ACLU, whether it be from a neighborhood association, whether it be from an employee union. And those are very difficult things to deal with, and each one of us has to, you know, look internally and really have a gut check when that moment occurs. I think one of the important things that we need to do is to seek advice from the professionals that we have hired to give us advice. Legal advice is an important part of that, and if there is legal advice that needs to be sought and something like that, to be able to, i- i- if someone comes before you and asks you to do something, you have to be able to take the time to find out what is legally correct. We have an obligation as a sworn elected official to uphold the law, and finding out what that is, is a very important step in the process of making decisions. You may not like it, we may not like the decision that we're forced to make by law, and then it's incumbent upon us to change that law and to make it fit the way that we would hope that it would work. And that's the way that the process should work.
Mr. Grisane.
Ben, what was the question again? Were you, you asking whether I would stand down from the pressures?
Yes. I wanted to emphasize in my follow-on question, the pressure that ACLU was bringing on the individual members of the board, and whether or not you would bow to that pressure or stand to it.
Part of, part of the answer is, is what I believe in. More importantly, is what the community believes I should do. I'm, I'm an elected official. I'm there to represent them, and I will do what they elected me to do. So it's incumbent upon me to find what they want, not so much what I want, but what do they want? And I would go out there and find what that is, and I would vote for them, as they would want me to represent them.
Thank you. We'll close now with the two-minute closing statements. The first one in the random order is Larry Carr.
Great, thank you. Again, thank you to the Church of the Valley for hosting this. Mr. Gilmore, thank you for being our moderator tonight, and for all of you who have come out tonight and spent a few moments with us. You know, it's difficult when you're answering questions with only 30 seconds to really get into things, and I'm sure many of you have follow-up questions to the answers that you've heard tonight, and perhaps we'll have an opportunity one-on-one after this, or always feel free to call or, or email me, and I'd be happy to explain a little bit further. I, I'm Larry Carr. I've lived in Morgan Hill for virtually my entire life. My dad bought 16 acres just on the west side of Morgan Hill when I was three years old in 1972, and moved the family here. Went through schools in Morgan Hill, from elementary at Paradise Valley through graduation of, at Lively High School in 1987. Proud to, to live in Morgan Hill. Went away for college and for the beginning of my work career, and my wife and I decided that Morgan Hill was the place that we wanted to raise our family. It was a great experience for me and for my two brothers, and it's the place that, that we have chosen to raise our family. I have two kids, my oldest of which just started kindergarten in schools here in Morgan Hill this fall. I was a school board member for four years, in which time we did some, what I think are amazing things. Test scores went up, we were able to increase salaries for our teachers, which allowed us to recruit some of the best and brightest to our district, and we passed a bond that allowed us to build a new elementary school, build the second, the first-ever second high school in Morgan Hill, which allows us to have four-year high schools for the first time in Morgan Hill since Lively High School first opened, before it went on double sessions and eventually two or three-year school. I'm an incumbent. I've served four years on the city council, in a time when we have gone through tremendous change and have done some tremendous things in Morgan Hill that I think have been to the benefit of residents. My focus in the next four years are going to be on a sustainable budget, and making sure that that budget allows for the services that Morgan Hill residents need and deserve. That includes public safety and providing public safety, increasing services for youth, and partnerships through our school district, and services for our seniors. Again, my name is Larry Carr, and I'd be honored to have your support on November 2nd. Thank you.
Mr. Grisane.
Ben, I want to thank the Church of the Valley for hosting this. It's incredible opportunity for, for residents to talk to people who are running for office. This is the first time for me. In serving Morgan Hill, I will support measures and actions that preserve our open space and rural character. I'll provide for our youths and seniors. We must solve our budget problems and still build our library. We must build a third fire station, as outlined in our master plan. We must make sure our water is pure and safe to drink, that our air is not polluted from the egress of mass development in Coyote Valley, that we attract good companies and industry located in planned areas, that we bring well-paying jobs to Morgan Hill and to the community. I have a passion for this city. I believe in its people. We can grow by remaining small and still have good jobs, affordable housing, clean parks, and a wealth of community services. If elected, I will work very hard on behalf of the people of Morgan Hill to ensure that their needs are met. Did not mention, but I am ambitious. Yes, I want to be the best. I want to be the best father anyone could be, the best spouse and loving husband, or my father was. I also want to be the best council member this city ever had. I believe that each of you here not only have a vested interest in Morgan Hill, but in my candidacy, for the leadership I will provide and for the vision that we share. I ask not for your support, not only for your support and your vote, but I ask that you join me in my passion for Morgan Hill, to make it the best it can possibly be. In return, I will serve with unquestionable honesty and integrity, with passion and compassion, to make Morgan Hill one of the best places to live in Santa Clara Valley, if not the best place in the state. Vote for Mark Grisane, your city council. Thank you.
I think this panel deserves a hand of applause.
Oh, okay. My name is Julia Starling, and I bring...
Mrs. Starling, forgive me.
Quite all right. No reason. Thank you. My name is Julia Starling, and I bring some fresh blood to the Morgan Hill. I love Morgan Hill. I love every bit of it, and I am very committed to the people in Morgan Hill, to the people in South County. I am dedicated, I am a strong, decisive leader. I know how to lead. I am not a follower, but I will always make, try and make the decision that best serves the community, that is in the best interest of the children, especially the seniors, because I work with them, I work for the CAG in Morgan Hill. I am a volunteer in so many organizations, for the Toys for Tots, for the, I am a secretary for the Morgan Hill Grange. I volunteer for the school district. I volunteer for the Women's Auxiliary in Morgan Hill. We clean up the Rose Garden at the home out there on Monterey Highway. So I am, I love Morgan Hill. I will make a good council member. So please remember my name, Julia Starling. I need your support, I need your vote, and I will do right by you. Thank you.
And now, thank you. I would remind all the candidates that there is a literature table that the Church of the Valley maintains in the fellowship hall. It will have literature, your literature, if you wish, on it until election day. Also, there is an open invitation from the Church of the Valley. Any candidate wishing votes from this congregation is invited, an open invitation, is invited to introduce himself or herself to a usher on Sunday morning at 10 o'clock. At the close of their service, they will be invited forward to introduce themselves to the congregation and ask for their support. With that, will this miss the panel?
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, of course.
Thank you. I want the people to know that I will always make public situations, make public, and I want to leave you with one last thought. Someone once said, I read somewhere, that politics without a moral foundation is a very dangerous enterprise. Thank you.
Will this miss the panel? You have 15 minutes to schmooze until we seat the candidates for the mayor's race in Morgan Hill.
Thank you.
The order of speaking, as well as the order of seating, has been selected by random. The first introductory is a one-minute introduction from Dennis Kennedy.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Ben, and thank you, Church of the Valley, for hosting us this evening. We appreciate the opportunity to speak to you, present our ideas. A little bit about who I am. I was raised, most of my life, I was born in Nebraska, but raised primarily in Santa Clara County. Went to high school, another Bellarmine graduate, then Santa Clara University. Received my bachelor's degree in mechanical engineering. I'm a registered professional engineer. I'm a husband, father, retired military officer, worked for IBM for 25 years, retired from there, then worked in consulting engineering. I'm serving my, actually, my fifth term as mayor of Morgan Hill. I love the job, I've been successful, very successful at it, and I want to continue to finish the work that is not completed.
Mr. Sellers.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore, and I appreciate the opportunity to come here this evening and to spend time, and appreciate the Church of the Valley for hosting us. I am sixth year now in the Morgan Hill City Council, and when I was elected, six years ago, became the first person in generation who grew up here, and then went on to serve on the city council. My wife also grew up here, and my mother-in-law is here this evening, I want to say hello, Carol. And she and I made a conscious decision to raise our children. We have three children here, here in Morgan Hill, because we had such a great experience here and wanted to, to replicate that. Our, both of our mothers are here in town, and so it was important for us to have that environment, and we understand the challenges that are faced by young families. Morgan Hill is the most young families of any city in the region, and we talk about it all the time, and that's been my focus on the council, and it will be again as your mayor.
Now, the second round, and this, of course, runs a lot faster than it did with the, when we had a panel of six. Each of you may ask a 30-second question of any one of your opponents. With a 30-second follow-on, the opponent has one minute to respond. The first question is to be placed by Mr. Sellers.
I'm going to go ahead and ask Mayor Kennedy.
Good choice.
One of the, one of the article, just something topical, today in the paper, there was a discussion about Coyote Valley, and there was a, the San Jose paper talked about how it was a, how we should proceed in dealing with San Jose regarding Coyote Valley. If they stonewall us, as they do with most cities on most issues in Santa Clara County, what, how far should we be prepared to take the issue?
Well, first, first of all, there is a lot that we can do and we are doing by working with our stakeholders committee. We've, we've built a, quite a force of South County representatives, including Supervisor Gage, representatives from the city of Gilroy, from our city council, and we're, we're actually, I think we're making inroads and getting at least responses to the questions that we've raised regarding the impacts on Morgan Hill. To directly respond to your question, if we're unsuccessful in that effort, litigation is always an option. I view that as the last resort, and we need to exercise all other alternatives before we resort to litigation.
Follow-on question?
No, I think you did a good job answering it. Thank you.
Mayor Kennedy?
I'll ask this one of Mr. Sellers. One of the hot-button issues in Morgan Hill right now is auto dealerships on Dunn Avenue. So I wanted to ask Mr. Sellers if he would support an auto mall or an auto district on Dunn Avenue.
We, I had an opportunity to spend an hour on Tuesday night with concerned citizens there, and what I told them, and I'll duplicate, except for I won't spend an hour saying it, is that we needed to meet with the citizens in that residential area first, before we started a lot of the processes. And that is something I'm dedicated to doing. I think it's something that, we have a fairly veteran council. As a student of history of Morgan Hill, I know that it's about as veteran as we've ever got. We have a history of turning over our councils, but we have, the casualty of that is, I think we've lost touch with the community to the degree that we need to. And so I was glad to have spent time with them. What I told them was that we will, we need to start with the community residents, and start with their concerns, and then branch out from there and talk about it, and we need to be less reactive, and not thinking about, well, we can't do it here, we can't do it here, what about here? We need to step back and think about a more comprehensive strategy for developing auto dealerships in our city, if, first of all, if we want to, and second of all, where and how we want to do that. So those are the two things I told them and that I'd say tonight.
new business wanted to go to Eddie, Ari and Morgan Hill? Would you reach out to the neighbors?
Well, as we've talked about this, Dennis, as you know, the, before I got on the council, but I guess while you were still on the council, they, there was a promise made to those residents that we would build one dealership and that would be it and we wouldn't change the rules. And so, in that circumstance, I feel like, as I told them, there was a promise made to the community and that needed to be a promise kept. And so if we were going to change that, then the first place you'd go is to residents of the community and say, look, we, we know that we'd said this several years ago, that we're going to stick with a, one dealer and not go beyond that. We're thinking about options, but we want you to be the first folks who weigh in on it because we made an obligation to you. Even though it wasn't a legally binding obligation, I think it had moral standing and that we ought to have stepped up and said, look, you know, you all. Additionally, it was obvious that if that promise was made, that if anything changes, that they were going to be the ones upset about it. So I think both from a legal, from a moral as well as just a community organizing standpoint, absolutely that's where we should have gone in that particular case.
30-second questions from the floor. You guys got offline.
Not yet.
This would be for Mr. Sellers. If a promise were made, and I guess that would also include Mayor Kennedy because he was involved at that time, why would one need to go back to them and try to persuade them something different if that promise had already been made?
If you want, we can both, both answers. You asked me first, I'll, I'll start. I think there's a, you cannot legally bind a future council. You can't say, well, we made this decision for all time. You can't make a future decision. So legally, you always have that option. Future councils can make changes, those kinds of decisions. But I think that you absolutely have to, like I said, start off with them. The short answer that I would say is that there may be a circumstance where we can make that community even better. The way it's zoned now, you could put in high-density housing right next to them. So what I told them that was regardless of what happens with the auto mall, that we need to have an ongoing conversation because we don't want to be in a situation where five years from now, they're coming back to the council and saying, why are you putting these high-rises right next to my, my two-acre property? So regardless, you need to have those kinds of conversations when you're making those decisions. So I guess my short response is, you know, if the circumstance is going to change, then we need to go back to them, talk to them regardless.
I'll allow your follow-on question, so it goes to Mr. Kennedy.
So, yes, I'll respond to the same question. The, the general plan and the zoning for that area would actually allow perhaps another dealership. But nonetheless, I, I think there is an obligation for us to go back to the community and that, that's what, really what we attempted to do by having a, a public workshop with the neighbors. But there is such a, I, I think it was not handled properly, not handled well. We should have, you know, I don't, I don't know if, actually what a better way to do it, but we should have worked at the planning level first because there are, there are land use issues-